Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, October 29, 2024. Where the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. Kell Smith. Ms. Strausberger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence, and during our moment of silence, we would like to honor the life and legacy of Ms. Sylvia Robinson, mother of our Assistant City Clerk, Ashley Robinson, and a retired, long-term, dedicated member of the City of Pittsburgh Personnel Department. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agendas. Is there a motion to amend?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be read into the record from Councilwoman Smith.
Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, October 26, 2024, to be Rotary International and the Rotary Foundation Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
And we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamation has been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council, per fining is not permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Ralph Williams, whom I do not see online, nor in the public. Therefore, our next speaker is Dr. Ronaldin Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Valdivia, GAS candidate for President 2024. A concern of this council has to do with the pre-agenda focus on Planning Commission. I sent an email to Ms. Gross on the 23rd of October. Ms. Gross, I thought that your maximum 100-second comments at the pre-agenda on the relationship between City Council and Planning Commission were the best part of that meeting. Paraphrasing some of those comments, quote, "The Planning Commission follows the city code. The City Council acts to create the city code. It is the City Council's powers to assign the Planning Commission its authority. If I misunderstood these comments, let me know." I think that you are correct in stressing the foundation of Planning Commission authority as derivative, only advisory, of the Pittsburgh Charter position that only City Council is the source of local law. City Council ordinance primary, city code secondary, Planning Commission tertiary. Your terse bundle emphasizes the necessity to ensure that city policy coheres with local law as well as state and federal law separately but a complement. Nothing is more important to me than reinforcing local governance as first tier, state second, national, U.S. third. Other comments from you expressing reserve about, quote, "Not letting market forces decide a particular city planning issue," example, housing, evoke this response from me. One, City Council should guarantee a form of housing to any, every Pittsburgher. I'm a socialist on this. And two, cities should allow market sources, forces to decide most other real estate matters, and I'm a capitalist on this. I made a very specific proposal on housing in 2022 when you and council debated the Limited Equity Cooperative 2022-0300, offering the utility of small independent housing units, following a Finland approach as an alternative partial solution. You didn't give me credit a few months ago when you reintroduced this idea with Mr. Coghill. I think that's a problem. A contrast to the verbal carousel from others offering comments your concision persuaded.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Special Agent Sunshine, Lord, these people are really trying to kill me. But you're my strength and you're my salvation. And I just want to say thank you for my health and my strength to get here even though I can't breathe. But being sick is not dead, Lavelle. And guess what? You were the first person that I contacted in this chamber to let know that I'm not dead. How about that? And ever since then, all my communication has been brought to this day over the phone. Praise God. Y'all can't GPS trap me no more, huh? Scared of getting my face when my neighbors look at me? I'm still here, standing, sick or not, representing all 47,000 plus people out by this street. You make $87,000 a year, you can never give me $275 a bus ticket to get here, even though the T-Ride is free. Praise God. That grace all day, all day. It's grace. That's what that is. So there's no reason I can't get here 'cause the ride is free. Whether you give me $275 or not from that $87,000 a year you make, you ain't got nobody here. You ain't helping nobody. None of y'all. It's sickening. It really is. It's sickening. And these people come up with these little places where you can go eat and get food and clothes and all this stuff. Really, nobody's offering us a place to lay our head. And whatever we do is chaotic. All those places are chaotic. There's no peace in those shelters. The different businesses and stuff that are out there that feed and clothe us, they don't give us bus tickets and maybe more, maybe more. But that's one out of how many? Give us bus tickets. What happened to the shuttle service to the different locations for us to go eat and get clothes and stuff? Where's the money for that, Lavelle? You don't want to talk about it. You can't even look me in the eye, can you? It's okay. Keep playing in our places. I'm gonna keep shining a light on your deception 'cause that's what it is. It's deception. Lord, please open eyes of everybody to see the deception that's in this place. The head man is the mayor. That's the head man that I was talking about a couple weeks ago. In Jesus' name, down who are all.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we will turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
New to papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Coghill. He has one. Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1096, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Execute an Agreement with the Center for Public Safety Excellence to Host a Training for Local and National Firefighters at No Cost to the City.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 1097, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 227 Fort Pitt Boulevard at No Cost to the City.
And Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services. Councilwoman Strausberger for Councilwoman Smith.
No new papers, Mr. President.
And Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill 1098, Resolution Authorizing the City's Acceptance of a deed conveying all right, title, and interests in a parcel which is a hillside with no address located along Allegheny River Boulevard in Council District Number Nine and in the 12th Ward to the city and authorizing the payment of $1 in exchange for the parcel. Bill 1099, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh, the Director of Public Works and the Director of Finance to Enter Into an Easement Agreement or Agreements with Duquesne Light Company to Provide, Install, Use, Own, Operate, Maintain, Repair, Renew, and Finally Remove Four Anchors Along With Seven and One Half Feet of Vegetation Clearing Rights on City-Owned Property Along River Avenue Between Goodrich Street and Warfield Street at No Cost to the City.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure. Councilwoman Wilson for Councilwoman Warwick. Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1100, Resolution Providing for Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the South Negley Avenue Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $370,000, reimbursable at 95% any municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $1,250. Future Resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1101, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Apply for a Grant from Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the Penn Avenue Lighting Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $461,856 for the stated purpose.
And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I have two appointments.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 1103, Resolution Reappointment of Adrian Wono Hall as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a Term to Expire April 30, 2028. And Bill 1106, Resolution Authorizing the Appointment of Karen Dixon as a Member of the Citizen Police Review Board for a Term to Expire October 31, 2025.
Do we need a motion to interview or to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both appointments have been approved, and now we have three communications.
We have another. We have an informing resolution.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
Bill Number 1102, Resolution Informing City Council of the Reappointment of Kim Lucas as a Member of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority Board of Directors with a Term to Expire October 20, 2028.
And for that, we need a motion to read, receive, and file.
No move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now for our communications.
And Bill 1104, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended October 25, 2024. And Bill 1105, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a Donation to the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure from Safe Roots Partnership of Up to $1,000 to Support Schools in their Ruby Bridges Walk-to-School Event.
And for that, we need a motion to read, receive, and file.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to unfinished business, of which we have four appointments.
Bill Number 988, Resolution Appointment of Joshua Shuneman as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a Term to Expire September 1, 2028. 989, Resolution Appointment of Katie Weddick as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a Term to Expire September 1, 2028. Bill 990, Resolution Appointment of Larson Scheller as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with a Term to Expire September 1, 2028. And Bill Number 992, Resolution Reappointing Rachel O'Neil as a Member of the Planning Commission with a Term to Expire January 1, 2030.
And may we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointments have been approved. That moves us on to Reports of Committee for Final Action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number 1090, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for October 23, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 776, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Director of the Department of Finance to Suspend the City's Sideyard Sale Program Indefinitely. Bill 1037, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through T. 2007 De World Street, Council District Six. 2003 Wyandotte Street, Council District Six. 5377 Warble Street, District Nine. 5379 Warble Street, District Nine. 4937 Rosetta Street, District Nine. 557 Lenora Street, District Nine. 6824 Kelly Street, District Nine. 623 Hell Street, District Nine. 621 Hell Street, District Nine. Zero Hell Street, District Nine. 617 Hell Street, District Nine. 242 Johnston Avenue, District Five. 844 Excelsior Street, District Three. 1114 Arlington Avenue, District Three. 125 Millbridge Street, District Three. 212 Attica Street, District Two. 1122 Liverpool Street, District Six. 1234 Butterfield Way, District One. 17 Pluff Street, District One. And 1149 Margray Street, District Five. Bill 1038, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program, Items A through K. 2804 Webster Avenue, District Six. 3508 Ridgeway Street, District Six. Zero Deary Street, District Nine. 902 Lacston Street, District Nine. 420 St. Joseph Street, District Three. 1311 Iton Street, District One. 1313 Iton Street, District One. 1300 Voskamp Street, District One. 32 Wosner Avenue, District One. 3034 Viola Street, District One. And Zero Orchard Place, District Three. Bill 1039, Resolution Amending Resolution 237, 2021, to Provide for the Extension of Professional Services Agreement through June 30, 2026 with Zeo Technologies for Costs Associated with the Provision of Web Hosting Services for the City Controller's Office at a Cost not to exceed $26,250. Bill 1068, Resolution Amending Resolution 588 of 2024, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the County of Allegheny for the Completion of Lead Safety Projects as Approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan Act Allocation at a Cost Not to Exceed $600,000 by Updating the Authorized Recipient to be the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County.
And let us begin with Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we did provisional vote on 2024-776, which is the suspension of the side yard program. And thank you to Councilman Wilson, who asked if there were any kind of applications that were already moving through. And I talked to Jennifer Gulah this morning. Thank you to the director. So the intent of this amendment in front of us is to allow the applications that have already been received, there are about 10, to continue to move through. And so in the amendment, we added the word "application" so that new applications will be suspended and applications, new applications will cease to be received with this amendment. But then the ones that are currently in hand can continue to move through.
Thank you. So we have-
I have a motion to amend.
Bill 776, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been amended. Any further discussion on the bill? Councilman Coghill?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President. Originally, I was very opposed to the bill, to the original bill from the sponsor, as to make, form a discrimination against landlords. To me, that was, I had a lot of issues with that, and it was, this was not right on its face. I had heard whispers that, you know, there may be an amendment, kind of shelving the whole program or scrapping the whole program. And I prefer that over singling out a class of people, for sure. But I do question, why are we tampering with this at all? This has proven to be a successful program, at least in my district. Many people have taken advantage of it. They do gardens, they do parking lots, they do lots of different things there with that side property. Not to mention, it takes the burden off Public Works for our cleaning leans, right? I mean, I usually, if I'm lucky, I get two or three cleaning leans done a year. This is a great program. It's been proven to work, and it takes the burden off Public Works where somebody adopts a lot and nurtures it and takes care of it. So I didn't understand the logic originally. I don't understand it now either. I think the best thing to do is just to keep it as it is. And if we're gonna make any amendments, the only amendment I feel it really needs is the fees, so it doesn't cost the City of Pittsburgh money for whichever trans, for any transaction. If we have to raise the fees to make that, you know, neutral, I'm for that. So I can't vote for it today. I just don't understand it. I don't understand the logic. I don't even understand why we're taking this up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this bill? Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, just for the, because the councilman mentioned "adopt a lot." That is, that is a program that still exists, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Right, so-
It's different than the side yard.
It's different. Where you're not own, you don't own it, but you have a lease with the city to take care of it, basically. Okay. Just wanted to verify.
Yes. This is strictly for the side yard program. With that, Councilwoman Strausberger.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion at the request of the Controller, the Controller and the Controller's Office to recommit Bill 1039. This is with regard to Zeo Technologies that we discussed with them last week.
May we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill 1039 has been recommitted. It will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Any further discussion? If not, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bills will aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
No on 776. Aye on everything else.
Mr. Coghill?
No on 776. Aye on the rest.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
No on Bill 776. Aye on all remaining bills.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
On Bill 776, six ayes, three noes. And on Bills 1037, 1038, and 1068, nine ayes.
Bills have received the required number of votes. It is passed finally. That moves us to Councilman Bobby Wilson presenting the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1092, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for October 23, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1041, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Upstream PGH for the Installation and Maintenance of a Community-led Public Art Installation Located at 8229 Breisler Street at No Cost to the City. Bill 1048, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 797 of 2017, as amended in Title, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Children's Museum by $5,000 and Increasing Northside Youth Athletic Association by $2,500 and Friendship Circle by $2,500 and Authorize Subsequent Agreements.
You've heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass this bill will aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills have received the required number of votes. It is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presenting Committee of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1093, Reported a Committee on Recreation Youth and Senior Services for October 23, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 846, Resolution Renaming the Robert E. Williams Shelter Located at Robert E. Williams Park as the Shinley Heights Pavilion.
You've heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass this bill will aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received the required number of votes. It is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross presenting the Committee of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1094, Reported a Committee on Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology for October 23, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1031, Resolution Amending Resolution 912 of 2023, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements or Amendments thereto with ESRI, granting uncapped citywide access to ESRI's products, including Arc GIS velocity for all departments. This will allow the city to build and maintain an authoritative system of record. Expanding access to the system of record will enable the city to make data-driven decisions, share information across departments, and perform advanced analytics. It will also share information with the public, meeting the needs of the City of Pittsburgh by increasing the approved amount by $80625 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,950,625 over seven years. Bill 1032, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto with Information Technology Services for AV Installation Services with Cable Management for Citywide Conference Rooms with Recommended Equipment for Total Cost not to Exceed $68,455 over one year. And Bill 1033, Resolution Amending Resolution 378 of 2022, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Fifth Amendment to Cooperation and Project Agreement for the Creation and Operation of the Regional Data Center Agreement with Allegheny County and the University of Pittsburgh, with the city and county providing funding for the university's work for the Western Pennsylvania Regional Data Center by increasing the approved amount by- Western Pennsylvania Regional Data Center by increasing the approved amount by $300,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $765,000 over nine years.
You've heard the reading inside of the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, but a clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin? Aye. Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger? Uh, Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received legal, the legal, legally required number of votes, is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilman Cory Mosley presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill 1095, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for October 23rd, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1034, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 707 Grant Street at No Cost to the City. Bill 1035, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for Professional Services relating to the Deployment and Management of Mobile Restrooms at Various Locations Throughout the Municipality at a Cost Not to Exceed $600,000 over two years. Bill 1036, Resolution Authorizing the Dissolution of the Somerset at Frick Park Tax Increment Financing District, Council District Five.
You've heard the reading inside of the bill, is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, but a clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick? Er, sorry, Mrs. Strausberger? Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to moses and resolutions, is there anything for members? If not, we do have a number of meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda relative to Chief Scorato's return to collegiate basketball refereeing chaired by Councilman Coghill. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 30th, Council will hold a pre-agenda interview at 9:30 AM, and then our Standing Committee meeting at 10:00 AM. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM. Also, Wednesday at 2:30, Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda relative to the Section Eight program as it relates to landlords, and I'll be chaired by Councilman Warwick. And then on Thursday, October 31st at 12:00 PM, Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 985 as it relates to the historic designation of the Pittsburgh Glass Studio. Spe- speaker registration will close at 10:30 AM the day of the hearing. And also Thursday, October 31st at 1:30, Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1021 as it relates to a petition from Manchester Neighbors. Speaker registration will close at 12:00 PM the day of the hearing. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council Meeting webpage by the deadline, you may also clerk's office- I did receive a call, um, from Manchester Neighbors who wish to actually cancel the public hearing that they requested, so we, we will, although announced, they have withdrawn their petition, so they no longer wish to have that public hearing. Anything else? Councilman Strausberger?
Yes, um, thank you. In addition to the moment of silence that we had this morning, um, I wanted to share that Rabbi Walter Jacob passed away on October 20th. He was both a Holocaust survivor from Germany and Rabbi Emeritus and Senior Scholar at Rode of Shalom Congregation, so I, I'd like to have another moment of silence if we could.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilwoman Smith?
I just want to say real quickly that I had a, a lot of people were wondering what's happening with the zoning, um, hearings and zoning legislation that I put through, and I understand some people had some meeting and, um, had some conversations, but I will just say to the public that I had a meeting also with, uh, Jake Pollak and, um, Sean Carter and Solicitor Friedson on Friday, a brief meeting, and we are getting to someplace where, um, they're willing to work on some of the legislation, but I will say that, uh, we do have a public hearing scheduled for the 20th, and we're waiting to see if, uh, the administration's going to do a mailing or if we're gonna do a mailing, but if we do a mailing, it will be citywide, and we will let people know when the hearings are, there has to be two hearings, I believe, and then, when, once we do that, we'll make sure that the p- public is notified. So up until that point, we're still working on things, we're still, um, having conversations, and we have negotiated some, on some, some issues, uh, and matter of fact, some of the major issues that the community was concerned with seems to be, uh, some things that we're gonna take, possibly consider taking out. So I just wanted the public to know we are working on it, ki- and, and that we're gonna have some, we'll do a mailing citywide. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Warwick?
Yeah, just with regard to that too, just to mention the post-agenda, so hopefully all of this can kind of, you know, get figured out in time for that post-agenda, and then we can just sort of have a conversation at the table and clarify for folks what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, just on the same topic, um, on Monday at 1:00 and at 2:00 o'clock, uh, we will have briefings with the Department of City Planning on the Fair Housing Bills. If all members were present, so we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.